I'll call this Des Moines City Council to order for tonight's study session, February 2nd. And would, Matt, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Received notice from Councilmember Musser that she's not feeling well and won't be here. Is there a motion to excuse?
No move.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll have comments from the public. We're in our study session format, which means that the comments to be made are in conjunction with the topics that are on the agenda for tonight. We do have one person signed up. Please speak from the podium, and you have three minutes, and it's Joel Mencanides.
Your Honor, I think he's going to be one of the people who presents on item number two.
For the SBDC?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anyone who didn't sign up who wished to speak tonight? Okay, seeing, I hate to pull the rug out from under you, but we're going to head into executive session under the Rise Code of Washington, forty-two point three zero, sub one, sub I, to discuss pending litigation for a period of approximately fifteen minutes. First topic of discussion tonight is the NPDS program and twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen permit. Land use planner Laura Chico.
De Chico.
De Chico, I'm sorry.
But don't feel bad, I called her that for the first three years she worked here, so.
It is implemented in Washington State by the Department of Ecology. The city has been a permatee since two thousand and seven. It has a five-year permit span, and so will be expiring this year in two thousand and twelve. Department of Ecology has routed a draft permit for the next five-year cycle. That won't take effect until two thousand and thirteen, so in the interim, they have effectively extended the current permit and the current permit conditions for one year until that is finalized. As part of that permit, the city is to establish a stormwater management plan, and over the course of this last five-year session, a number of the activities that we've conducted as part of that include public education and involvement. The city has started a car wash kit program, currently has five kits that fundraisers can check out to prevent soapy water from entering the stormwater system. In two thousand and eleven, those were checked out forty-two times, so it's becoming well-known. Staff has visited most of the main sites that people use and talked to those property owners. We have kits also to participate in the Puget Sound Starts Here campaign. School groups and others can check out and go around to the storm drains and install a little plaque that has the Puget Sound Starts Here logo on it to increase public awareness of pollutants potential to get into the stormwater system. We also have brochures and information on natural yard care. The permit required that the city establish an ordinance relating to illicit discharges and how those are addressed. We have established a hotline that residents can call in if they see any discharge of materials that are not permitted to be within stormwater or surface or groundwater, and train staff to identify those types of discharges and to address those for elimination. The permit requires that site drainage review and inspections are conducted on larger development projects, redevelopment projects, and staff training is conducted to help participate in those. And in addition to what the city is already doing, there are requirements for operation and maintenance of public and private stormwater facilities. These include stormwater treatment facilities, flow control facilities, catch basins, and as of this permit, the city is required to inspect and then inform private facility owners of any required maintenance on theirs. And in addition to those which are required by the permit to be inspected, which are those constructed after two thousand and seven, the city is staff and time allows, has been inspecting all known private facilities also.
Jeanette?
I'm wondering on the hotline where they call if they think somebody's polluting, where do they find that number?
There is a link on the city's homepage, and I believe that's posted in other locations also, but we have a stormwater management program homepage that has a link to that. The city has developed stormwater pollution prevention plans for all of the city facilities and fleet maintenance, and then as part of this permit, we're required to track and report on all of these activities. That includes inspections, maintenance, staff training, and we've been required to map and have completed this year mapping all public and private facilities and putting those into GIS, and all of that tracking for this permit and for other reasons will be facilitated by the institution of the City Works software that has been approved for purchase.
How confident are you that you've identified everything?
I would leave that up to our stormwater.
Given all the annexations and developments that King County approved prior to annexation and everything else that we seem to stumble across every time we have a PUD or some other ...
Let's just say a very good faith effort has been made to identify everything.
Okay.
Sounds good. So the next five-year permit cycle, a draft permit, has been routed for public comment. Those comments are due tomorrow, and staff has assembled a comment letter that will be signed by the city manager and submitted before the deadline. For the most part, all of the current activities are continuing unchanged. There are several areas of potential concern for both our city and other permatee cities that could have impacts. These include changes in the language relating to low-impact development practices. These include things such as rain gardens, permeable pavement, bioretention swales. Currently, the city allows for these and will review these. The draft permit has requirements that the city alter all of their affected codes to list this as the preferred approach for development, and so additional training would be needed for staff to review these. Given that this is a new field, there's some limited information on the maintenance of these types of facilities and the lifespan of them.
Dan?
Yeah, I was going to raise the question there on the one-acre thresholds. How much property or how many people are going to be affected by that one-acre limit?
I'll get to that one in just a second. The one-acre threshold, so currently, the city conducts drainage review on new projects, and under the current permit, the threshold to conduct that type of review is for projects that are one acre or greater. The draft permit proposes to open that up to all future development. So that would potentially affect most projects that are coming into the city.
She hadn't answered the question. That would affect a lot of people, a lot, yes.
Another component of the draft permit that has a lot of questions relating to it contains language that the city shall participate and cooperate in a watershed planning program led by King County, but other than participate and cooperate, there are no details given, so it's unknown what types of impacts this would have on staff and other city resources. For inspection of all of our public and private facilities, the required frequency has been increased, so increased staff time will be needed, there'll be increased use and maintenance needed for equipment to conduct those inspections. And I addressed the one acre. The new draft permit contains four new monitoring requirements containing such things as water quality. Cities are allowed to choose whether to do this individually, which would require specialized equipment and specially trained staff to do this, or we can contribute into a collective fund, and the Department of Ecology would conduct that monitoring. There's varying rates for each city. The combined cost for the city of Des Moines to participate in the Department of Ecology-led inspections would be just over twenty thousand dollars a year, and we, staff has been requested to give kind of a ballpark estimate on what could be the financial impact of all of these components. These are phased in over the five-year cycle, so it's a little hard to place an exact number on it, but in terms of collectively, this could be somewhere in the range of one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the additional requirements under the permit.
Jeanette?
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, does the comment letter say we don't want to do this because of the expense?
It certainly states that the city has concerns over these, and that, given the current economy, this will also potentially require some additional outlay and expertise from people who are submitting, so higher costs for developers, so.
Or for the people that will be using the houses as well.
Correct. So certainly, strong concern is listed over primarily the potential costs for these additional requirements, because it took five years to ramp up to the current level that we are under the current permit, and these are over and above that.
Dan?
I hope I'm not interrupting you. The normal flow of water, rain and stormwater, is into the ground and then soaks down. Has there been any system established where you have perforated drain pipes for this water to part of it goes directly to its natural pattern?
That would potentially be used on some developments, and maybe our surface water engineer could address some of those.
So for a development, say a house or a subdivision, you could have some of that type of perforated pipe for the stormwater that's coming, say, off of a roof or a driveway, but when you start talking about the amount that's coming off of parking lots and streets and the like, we do have some detention and retention-type facilities, whether or not they would have holes in them to allow percolation or not. They would have to be huge in order to allow all the rainwater in any one event to be soaked into the ground and have enough volume to fill again in the next rain event. But it's not to say that you can't do that, but it's not going to take care of all the volume that would come through, and I'll let Lauren add to that.
Well, I'd say that for the majority of the area of the city of Des Moines, it's just really, given the topography and the soils that we have, we have a lot of glacial till, so there's not a lot of areas to infiltrate rainwater. There's some areas in the North Hill area that seem to be pretty good, but most of the other parts of the city give us trouble for that.
In addition, that type of system would not account for the water quality issues that we're obligated to. This round was dealing with the non-point, which means it's harder to get your arms around because, you know, it's a thousand points, or thirty thousand points.
And to continue answering Councilmember Burgess's question, yes, the letter is going to point out the difficulty in some of the issues, for example, the low-impact development and how well does it really work or not, the cost, both the ongoing cost to us to maintain and do all these things, the cost to development when it comes in. But the other reality is that we are one of how many cities that are getting practically this exact same permit. We are not the only one who are being required to do all these things, and the state is being forced to do these things by the federal government. And we will point out all the issues as best we can, and I know all the other cities are doing the same thing, and AWC has been tracking this very carefully for us, and we'll see where it goes.
Bob?
So what are you describing here, a trickle-down, unfunded mandate?
Is that a pun?
You know what I mean.
Yes.
Actually, no pun intended at all.
Well, I understand it's an unfunded mandate from the feds through the state, but they feel like since we can create a stormwater utility and charge people for it, it's just a matter of charging the right amount of money, I guess.
Carmen?
I would assume that the goal here is to keep from destroying the waters of Puget Sound, and it would seem to me that all of the cities should be collaborating either through Washington cities or suburban cities to come up with something that is handled similarly everywhere. Is that happening?
There are certainly areas, because there are about a hundred cities of less than a hundred thousand population like we are, that are under the same permit, there are areas that we collaborate already. In terms of the public outreach, there are some joint stream cleanup projects that are done with other cities, so there are several of these components that we can work together with other cities.
I remember King County had several public service announcements that ran all over TV over the last couple of years, ranging from what to do with your dog droppings and car washes and things like that, so they were running ads like that.
The Puget Sound Starts Here, that's another program that's done collectively, but so we're all able to use the same resources and not have to kind of reinvent some of these programs.
It just seems we should also be coordinating so that every city that affects it all has the same standards.
And I can guarantee you the language we're going to be using in our letter is not something staff made up all by themselves. Talking with AWC, talking with the other cities, is going to be very similar language from one letter to the next.
This doesn't seem to quantify dollar-wise what it would do to the costs with people might be considering doing development. Is it a significant amount? Is it something they'll bring up? I mean, if it's the same everywhere, that's, you know, it's across the board, but if one city has far more stringent demands than another, then again, it becomes an issue of, well, do I build here or do I build somewhere that doesn't require as much of us?
Correct, and every city would have to have the same baseline. Certainly, cities can do something in excess of that, but we're going to be in the same boat as all of the other permatees.
And it's not, it's even more than that. Even if they're doing the same sort of thing we're doing, if they don't have a good adequate system already, ours is pretty good right now. We've been very aggressive in taking care of a lot of problem areas that we've had over the last ten to fifteen years. If you look at the fees that we are charging our citizens and property owners versus what some other cities are, we're in the middle of the road to the bottom half of the averages that are being charged, not only for the ongoing monthly fees, but the connection fees as well. We are certainly nowhere near the top when it comes to that throughout King County.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, and now a presentation from the Small Business Development Center. And it won't be Zev, it'll be Rich.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's Marion Yoshino, Economic Development Manager, and I'm delighted this evening to welcome the Small Business Development Center. As you know, we have two councilors at the Small Business Development Center, Zev Siegel and Rich Shockley, and they each have their area of expertise, and Rich's area is helping businesses acquire capital. He's an amazing specialist, and often businesses can get, sometimes they can get special types of financing, if it's a woman-owned business, a minority business. He kind of has his finger on the pulse of which banks are lending and how to navigate their loan paperwork, so it's really wonderful to have that resource, because, as we know, capital can be one of the biggest challenges, so that's why I'm especially fond of Rich. And I'd also like to introduce you to Joel Mencanides. He has actually done something very special for the city recently. We're in his debt, because when our sister-city delegation was visiting from Chongli, China, we were constrained by the fact that the city is not allowed to spend any money or city resources on sister-city relationships, and so we had a small amount of money donated for the purpose of hosting our guests, and we called upon Joel, and he was extremely gracious in loaning us a tour bus and his father, who is a wonderful tour guide, to give our guests actually first-class transportation from the airport, gave them a little tour around, took them to their hotel, and it was just wonderful. We were able to offer them some red carpet treatment and reciprocation for how much they offered us. So on that note, I'll let Rich tell you a little bit more about what the Small Business Development Center has been doing in this last quarter.
Good evening. My name is Rich Shockley. I am with the Small Business Development Center where at Highline Community College, and as Marion mentioned, I have a partner, Zev Siegel, and we work together. He is out of town this week traveling, so he apologizes that he wasn't able to join us. I'd like to share a little bit about who the Small Business Development Center is, what we do, and a little bit about our funding. Our funding comes a couple of different ways. The first portion comes as a line item from Congress, from Congress, it's part of the SBA budget. That goes down to a land-grant college, so in Washington State, it's WSU, and then from there, it's out to the different centers, and we get matching funds from the communities. So we try to work right in the area that we are funded where the matching funds come from. We do a number of different things with the businesses in the community. We work with established businesses and also new startup businesses, and our goal, as well as the community's goal, is to create and help support economic development. That usually comes in a number of different forms for us. We try to focus on what we call jobs that are being saved. An example would be if a business came to us and said, "We're going to have to close the doors if we can't solve this problem." We would look at trying to solve that specific issue so that we can retain those existing jobs, and we try to track that. We also track new business startups and then new jobs created. So that's one piece of that. The other side is economic, of economic impact is the dollars invested, and that's invested by the owners in the business or on loans that we can help them secure. Another piece of funding that we track, but we don't count towards the overall dollars that we publish, is the funding that we often get from a landlord. When a business is leasing a location, oftentimes, one of the alternative funders is their landlord, who owns that property and can contribute either in reduced dollar rent or in helping in build-out. But those are the ways that we try to help businesses in the community. Now, how we do that is we provide one-on-one confidential advising, and our goal isn't to sit down and mandate what they should do, although we have an opinion on what we think would work. Our goal is really to help educate, show them the alternatives, and let them make the best decision for themselves and their business. So it's the advising service, and even though you only see Zev and myself working in the community, there's actually forty advisors in the state, and we're a fairly close-knit group, and if someone has an expertise that I can draw on, we will co-counsel with that advisor. We'll invite them in through a phone conference call. Some of them are locally, and we will invite them in to use their expertise. And then we also have two export centers, one here in Tackwell area and one in Spokane, and the goal there is to promote export and help businesses who are exporting open new markets or help businesses who aren't yet exporting determine whether they can. And then we also have a research group that is a no-cost research to the businesses in the community, and that, we use that often in the creation of a business plan for funding or in looking at expanding markets. So we, many of us in the network come from a business ownership background. Many of us have learned it through schooling and the hard way or doing it ourselves, and we enjoy working with the businesses, and we probably get about as excited as they do when we see them stabilize business and expand. So again, Zev Siegel and myself, we enjoy working with the community and have had a good relationship with the cities. I'll give you an idea of what our impacts were from our center last year, and we did in financial impacts, again, this is investment from the owners and loans secured, was just over one point four million dollars last year. We worked with just over two hundred, I think it's about two hundred and twenty different businesses throughout the course of the year, and we spent about sixteen hundred hours in either one-on-one advising or in prep work with them. The number of jobs that were created this last year were just over sixty, number of new business starts and a number of saved jobs as well. So sometimes those numbers are hard to get our arms around, and we can't, all we can do is put in the activity with the businesses, and it's really driven by the business owners, but see us as a support for the community, and they can't really argue with the price. We're no cost to them, so we try to do a good service for them. Right now, I'd like to invite Joel to come up and share a little bit about his business and how we've worked together, and then if we have time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, I'll make a comment before they bring him up. In case you didn't know it, we have a business in the city of Des Moines that owes their existence to the help that the Small Business Development Center gave them, and that's the Blue Vanilla Bakery. If it wasn't for the help that these people gave the Blue Vanilla, they may not have ever made it off the ground, so again, kudos to you for that.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Joel Mencanides, and I'm the general manager at Customized Tours and Charters. We've been in Des Moines for about twenty-three years, and we're a small family company, and we do sightseeing tours. We give people tours of the city of Seattle, and we pick them up at the hotels here in the Sea-Tac Airport, and they're in their Seattle hotels, and then take them up and show them around, show them a good time. We also take them up to Boeing, and we do a Snoke Holme Falls and a winery tour, and we also head up to Mount Rainier, as well as other customized tours like our name portrays. We started in a home just a stone's throw away from the office, from the city hall over here. In fact, you might have seen our buses over the years. Parked out on Two Twentieth, and then my dad moved, and now we're over at BJ's Blaze, if you're familiar with BJ Vajornbija. He's part of the community here, and I think most people know him pretty well, and he's a real pleasure to work with as a landlord. We've had a lot of ups and downs over the years, and it's been difficult the last few years, but, you know, we've started an advice of the small business, and Rich's help has given us a lot of sound advice. I actually visited him several years ago, and he suggested, with looking at our books, that we get a different bookkeeper, and so we did that, and we cleaned up things and cleaned up our books and came back to him just a couple of months back, and said, "Hey, now that we've cleaned up our books, can you help us again?" Unfortunately, we survived those few years of not keeping books like we should have. Anyway, currently, he's helping us with examining what's profitable for us and what's not. It's a second look, and when you're a business owner, you're very busy doing what you do, and oftentimes, you don't have a chance for somebody to take an objective look, help you examine. you examine the, what you're doing, and maybe asking the right questions that you're not asking. And so that's what he's doing for us right now. And currently, he's got me on a project here, which I've got multiple pages of with me here now, but just kind of examining some of those questions. And who knows? He may help us with procuring some equipment with loans, if that's even possible, in our situation. So, yeah, he, he's also going to be helping us with some marketing efforts and so on. I am, pretty much, I do everything with our company right now. So I have many hats. I do payroll. I do scheduling. I answer the phones. Sometimes I even give a tour. So I do a lot of things for our small little company. And, and so it's nice to be able to go to someone and, and have them, you know, say, "Hey, what about this?" And I, you know, I never thought about asking that question. And so, you know, he's helping, helping me to, to put some facts together so that we can actually say, "This is, this is what's true. This is a fact." And a lot of times, when you're doing everything, you kind of go by feel, and that's not always a good, good way to go. So he's helping us with putting our, you know, putting our feet on the ground with, what's real, with the financial numbers and so on. So he's going to be helping us in those areas, financial and marketing and, and some of those other advice.
Okay.
Yeah, Jeanette.
Based on what I heard from Dan Caldwell, I'm going to ask if you've looked at maybe having some cruise people like Argosy or something take people from Seattle to the marina, then you pick them up at the marina and take them sightseeing like to Mount Rainier or something?
You know, we, we, the, the Argosy, they, they, they have a tendency to protect their, you know, I don't, I don't work well with, it's difficult. They keep their customers to themselves. But I, I've, I've often regretted that we didn't get that car museum here in Des Moines. I thought that would have been a great idea. I don't know where we would have put everybody to park them all. But I know that there's a lot of people in these hotels here, and it'd be nice to get them here in Des Moines to our local businesses. And I've put a lot of thought in it, actually, and I wish we'd have some kind of an attraction that would bring people to the water, because it's such a great place to go in the water there. And if there was some kind of, you know, the hydroplane museum, if we could snatch it out of that Kent area, you know, and bring them here, it'd be such a great idea to bring people over here.
That would have been good.
And, and I know that there's a free shuttle that South Center has for their mall and so on. If, if something like that was to go on, you know, with, with some of the attractions around here, it might, might bring some of that people to our local businesses here. But I don't know if that, even close to answering a question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, personally, Joel, I want to thank you. I know it was already brought up, but I want to personally thank you for what you did for the participants from our sister city in Shangri, China. That was a last-minute thing that you had to pull off, and from what I understand, they had a wonderful time with the sightseeing tour.
It was my pleasure.
You, you did a wonderful job for us. We really, really appreciate it.
Let us know if you need anything, you know, if you run into that problem again, we're always happy to help and give back in our small way to the community, you know, transportation's.
Really appreciate it.
Carmen?
I would just like to offer that if you talk with Marion about needing any marketing materials that tell you things about Des Moines, we'll see to it. You get good things.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us this evening?
I think we just did it.
I, yeah. Appreciate, appreciate the work of the Development Center. I think that it's hard for people to know where to go and ask for advice, let alone the quality advice they get, and, and we're lucky to have it here within our city, so.
Thank you. I, I do know, being a small business owner myself for a number of years, that you think you know everything or should know everything. And so it's, it, it's often helpful for us if, when you know of someone, you can refer them our direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last agenda item is the update on council goals, strategic objectives that we compiled from the January 14th retreat.
Dave?
Seems how we've already all been through that retreat, and we know what the content is. I'll just jump in and make a motion if somebody wants to change it, they certainly can. I move that the city council adopt a vision, mission, goals and strategic, excuse me, strategic objectives as revised at the January 14, 2012 council retreat.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Schuckler, second by Councilmember Pina. Jeanette?
We ran out of time at the retreat when we came up with these objectives, and we never did prioritize them. And so are we ever going to do that or just list them?
Well, it's good that you brought that up, because I know we did talk about and did prioritize the processes that we wanted to look at. And I believe that what we said was on the short-term strategic goals, that all of those were important. I think it was just the long-term list that, that we may want to prioritize. So if you have a suggestion on the long-term, then kick it off.
Or Matt?
Well, I don't really have a suggestion on, well, it's kind of short and long-term. Looking over these, talking with a few folks, it was, it became somewhat evident that we overlooked a goal that is kind of, I think, a key goal for us that should have carried over from last time, and that's to add something around continuing to explore and develop the opportunities in the 89-acre buyout area known as the Des Moines Business Park. There is nothing in these bullets that addresses that specifically.
So under the long-term?
I, I feel like it's, there's things that we're doing in the short-term, but it's, it definitely is more of a, I mean, I think it's a long-term item.
Could you restate that again? Continue, what was it?
Continue to explore and develop opportunities in the 89-acre buyout area known as the Des Moines Business Park.
And once again, slow.
Continue, continue to explore and develop opportunities in the 89-acre
Court buyout?
Buyout area known as the Des Moines Business Park.
I'll accept that as a, into my motion as a friendly amendment.
And Matt, you seconded it, so I assume you're okay with?
Yeah, I'm on board.
Okay. I'm a meat and bone with that.
Carmen?
I, I have a suggestion for a small modification on the short-term strategic objectives. It's the ninth bullet point down, and it's about insulated windows for airport noise mitigation. Rather than saying identify development regulations to delete, I think we should say delete or revise, so that we, we aren't shut out from thinking of a better way to deal with the subject. If we could just add the words "or revise" after the word "delete."
Is there support for that?
I don't see, I'm not, I'm not having any heartburn with it.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'll accept that.
Is there consensus for that? Okay.
Exactly. Is that motion a bit?
If I was, I'd just take it.
What's that?
What was that motion again? Delete that's?
No, just delete or revise regarding windows. That's all. Yeah. That's okay with Bob and Matt, so, okay. Yeah, Carmen, you have other ones?
No. Well, we, on the first bullet point in short-term, we mentioned a college and one retirement home specifically. And at our economic development meeting, I think we raised the question as whether we need to treat all retirement homes that are above a certain size equally, rather than pointing out one alone. So I'm wondering if there is a reason why we should define that as a little differently than naming just one of several.
Probably because those are the ones that came to us, I think is why we did that. But she makes a good point. I mean, does it make any difference if it was just only Wesley or other retirement homes? In my opinion, no.
Do, do we have any kind of a problem?
Please, please speak.
I'm asking that, I guess.
Push her into the microphone so that everybody can...
If we choose to name one alone?
I'll, I'll tackle the first half of that. I don't think you do necessarily, because you can identify areas of town where you want to allow, for example, the big issue that we talked about was building height. And each of the three retirement facilities that we have, I think, have unique situations given how close or far away they are from residential areas. So you might be able to write your, your code in a way that identifies more mitigation would be required if it is abutting a residential area versus abutting a commercial area as Wesley is. So I, I think we can figure out a way to deal with the uniqueness of each of the three and still deal with the issues that we know we're concerned about.
Are you, you're comfortable naming the two as they are now?
I'm, I'm comfortable instead of saying Wesley Homes, saying city's retirement facilities or communities.
I, I don't have a problem.
There's consensus with that, Matt?
No, no problem.
No, just say retirement communities.
City's retirement communities, okay. Did you have another one, Carmen?
Well, the only, the only other one, on the long-term, the fifth bullet point down, I'm surprised that the word green lawns are in there as if it's identifying the meaning of the sentence. I, I think it's, I think the intention is to be more comprehensive than, than just to focus down on something called green lawns. I don't know why the word green lawns is...
I think Dan brought that up, if I recall. Dan, you might want to elaborate on that.
Okay, my suggestion on why I said green lawns is there's a whole section of business with some taxation and what have you can be brought in if we have a cheap water supply, which means we're going to have to apply, well, not us, but working with the water districts to raise more cheap water. It has to be clean, make standards. Then more people will make your lawns green, will have more flowers sold, have more business opportunities in Supremon. We'll see kids playing in the yard if they're, if the yard can be played in. But presently, in the summertime, it turns brown, nobody touches anything, everything kind of dies, and it decreases the whole city. But by having, that's the subject of green lawns. Rather than regulate so much, is it cheap water supply, so that people will develop their homes.
Could be, including but not limited to, or something.
And we, we put those words there, but perhaps what we should do is have another dot point that says work with local water utilities to identify sources and opportunities to have low-cost water.
I, I think if you could separate that one out that way, so it's, but don't take away the bullet point that's already there. Just move green lawns to its own separate bullet point.
Well, if it needs to be, are taken out.
My point there is, from my own experience, drilling wells is not expensive. It's cheap. You generally pay them, we paid off three wells in less than six months.
I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm saying give it its own separate bullet point so that it's not tied...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're getting...
Yeah, okay, so that's going to be made it.
Yeah. That's what I say is longer term. Fighting is going to be a problem.
So I've written to say work with local water utilities to find or identify low-cost sources of water.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I, all I'm going to say is the green lawn, the green lawn point that was made was really conceptual to try and make a point.
Well, my, my motion was going to be to remove from that one simply the green lawns, but you've got it now where it's actually identified separately in another bullet point. Yeah, that makes a lot more sense because, and I actually thank you for bringing that one up, because that's the one I was going to bring up. Green lawns doesn't belong in that particular bullet point.
It now has its own.
Jeanette, did you have something?
I did. I'm wondering the plan to build a new courthouse in city hall. I thought we decided that was going to be further out than the current long-term.
Well, long-term can be long, long-term too. Here's, here would be my recommendation for dealing with that. I would pri, what I would do is instead of numbering these and prioritizing, I think what I would do is with this new one and the, the exploring the opportunities in the 89 acres, we essentially have 11 items. And I think what I'd like to do is identify what I, well, hopefully consensus-wise, the top five in this category and elevate those above the rest of them. Because I think that speaks, I think that gives a general inclination in terms of ranking. I don't know if you agree with that approach or not.
So we're going to vote on that at a later time? We're going to vote on the top five at a later time?
No, I was going to suggest now.
Oh, okay.
No, I was going to suggest, let's, you know...
Okay. Then I may have to withdraw the mo, well, I've got a motion out there right now that's been modified, but a number of times that we agreed on, but I think this one I can't agree on. To me, it's, it's, when we can get to them, we get to them. But who knows if all of a sudden tomorrow, something came up and the judge comes to us and says, "Hey, I found a, a great source of funding for a new courthouse," or something that I've been researching. Well, now all of a sudden, that becomes something we're going to be working on immediately.
Well, we're not talking about taking that off the list.
No, but we're talking about prioritizing. And when we start prioritizing, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. It could, that could switch a month from now, these priorities could switch. I've seen them so often switch when events, certain, certain events come up and what have you. I don't know what the necessity is for prioritizing. I just don't.
Is there, is there a consensus then for not prioritizing? Just leaving the list as is?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, I, I, I happen to prefer the prioritizing, only because I think there are certain things on here that, that I think have a higher priority than others, you know? But, but, but I can see where the consensus is, so with that, we'll leave it as is.
Dave?
Yeah.
What might be helpful, though, to Bob's point, is when you look at these long-term objectives and even the short-term objectives, there's a, to Bob's point, there's some kind of a practicality around what we can do with certain things. And I think getting feedback from the staff as to, I mean, their work plans should align with our objectives, and getting some feedback from them as to what can align and, and be executed in, in the next year or next three years would lead to a discussion that we should, because really, what we're trying to do is provide direction to the, the staff so they can get things done. And I think they need to weigh in, and if we can create some connection, and then we can prioritize that, that's a separate item.
See, so let me, let me, let me tell you why the, at least even grouping one set of issues over the rest of the long-term issues is important to me. I, some things, I think, are on a shorter time horizon, to me, require a shorter time horizon than others. For example, you know, a new, a new city hall and courthouse, I mean, to me, that's a, that's a 10- or 15-year thing or 20-year down the road kind of deal. But...
Maybe not.
But, you know, doing a comprehensive review of redondo and the issues there, to me, that's something that is more immediate than, than, than the courthouse and city hall. Our ongoing maintenance, you know, determining how to fund, ongoing maintenance of infrastructure and construction, new upgraded infrastructure, including safe, walkable streets, is a more immediate, you know? It's, it's something that within five years we have to fix, or we're going to be in real trouble, where some of these other things may be something that have a longer outlook.
Such as?
What's that?
I was just asking for a such as.
Well, I think you just...
Well, I had given, I'd given one example. Some of these others, you know, we're going to have to study the beach parks' future and designations sooner rather than later, because we're, we're making policy decisions on the... use of the facility, what investments we're going to make in the facility, you know, all of those kinds of things. So, I mean, I can see the conundrum of trying to prioritize because a lot of these things are important and it's a matter of degree. And at the same time, I see that there's more of a core that are a higher priority than some of the others, which is the only reason I suggested it. But if the consensus is not, I'm fine with that as well. Carmen?
I think one very high priority that, to some of the council, is to take a hard look at how we do our budgeting. And it seems to me that in doing that, if we give serious thought and time to it, priorities are going to organize themselves in ways that will make things almost self-prioritize in certain things. I don't see a need to do it now and then do it then and do it other ti, I felt that was going to be happening soon and intensively, and that that was where a lot of things would sort themselves out.
Matt and then Dan.
Actually, you know, I appreciate your comments. What I think I see is, I mean, this is a goals and objectives and visions document. What I think we're kind of getting into is, so what's our work plan? And that's where I think, that's where you start to call out those things that you think are of a more immediate nature or a longer-term nature, and it's also where you do collect input from the staff as to what our opportunities to execute on different items would be. So I would hope that in upcoming strategic meetings, we would, or sessions, we would sit and try and draft a work plan, not unlike what our committees do.
Bob?
I got a compromise for you.
Or to me, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan?
Dan and then Bob.
Okay, I was suggesting more on the idea of considering them as targets of opportunity. Of all of a sudden, say the feds release a lot of money for a particular project, we've got a shovel-ready project. It may have been their 10th priority or 12th priority, or may not even be on the list. But take them as they come, rather than try to pick and choose and finally pick the wrong one.
Here's my compromise. Take the plans to develop a new courthouse in city hall in Des Moines and make it the last item on the list, okay? That way, anybody looking at it will probably even be bored by then, or at least state in their own minds, oh, that's the lowest priority. There you go. I even swayed.
Is there consensus for that? There seems to be consensus for that, so. Okay, so there's agreement that we won't prioritize other than that one item?
Yep, so the motion still stands with the corrections, or not corrections.
Are there any other suggested changes or no?
Your Honor? Yes?
I do have one. The third bullet point, up from the bottom on the short-term, review and modify as needed the development regulations along Pacific Highway Commercial Corridor from Kent Des Moines Road to South 272nd. Can we save from 216th or even from the northern boundary of the city along Pacific Highway South all the way to 272nd? The Economic Development Committee talked about their work plan last, a couple nights ago, and looking at Pacific Ridge Commercial zoning was something that they wanted to do. So I would suggest it would be the northern border of the city.
So 210th to?
Right, so it's from the northern to southern boundary of the city.
Okay, well, I can accept Councilmember Pyasecki's suggestion there.
City manager, and it is a suggestion, you may take it or leave it.
One more comment.
Instead of, one prioritized priority we should consider, does it help the city's budget as opposed to, let's see, some of the octane flowers produces no revenue for the city, but somebody out building a, well, building whatever we're building, would bring revenue for the city, which would ease the pressure on it and keep us off the taxpayer back.
Right.
Well, these are short and long-term.
Develop a dollar for the city somehow, because one of the spinoffs is money is coming to the city, be a little bit more priority than.
Well, we already have develop alternative revenue sources, so that's, you know, under short-term.
Just wanted to make sure I got the difference on that.
It's on there, yep. Okay, are there any other changes? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting our vision, mission, goals, strategic objectives, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. With that, we come to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Pena, seconded by Councilmember Scott. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Our next council meeting, regular council meeting, will be next Thursday, February 9th. We are adjourned.
In your honor, your packets are already in your boxes if you haven't gone to get them already.
Oh, and uh, go Patriots.